All right, good evening and welcome to the 58th meeting of the 13th elected Town Council of Happy Valley Goose Bay. We have a piece of business that we have to attend to as our CAO and our executive assistants are out of town. So I'll pass it forward to the Chair of Finance and the Min, Counselor Palmeroy.
Thank you Mayor. In the absence of the CAO, I move that council approve the appointment of Town Engineer Randy Dillon as acting Town Clerk for this meeting.
Okay, it's been moved by Counselor Palmeroy that we appoint our Town Engineer Randy Dillon as a temporary Town Clerk for the meeting, seconded by Counselor Brumfield. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? Okay, Mr. Dillon, who are Town Clerk, sir? All right, so welcome to this evening's meeting. We have, as it is an emergent meeting, there's a single item on the agenda. We have our agenda ahead of us, in front of us, so I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Palmeroy, seconded by Counselor Rumbold. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, none being heard, all those in favor indicate with aye.
Aye.
Contrary minded? We've adopted our agenda. All right, we do have four delegations, I do believe, is that correct? Four, Mr. Four? Okay. And so I'll pass it forward to Counselor Palmeroy to read the normal notice that we give to all delegations. Counselor Palmeroy.
Thank you Mayor. In order to ensure an amicable and respectful environment for delegates and to meet with council, it is recommended that the public of Happy Valley Goose Bay notify the CAO of their or their designate of their intention at least 24 hours before the meeting by providing their name, contact information, and a brief synopsis of the issue or concern they wish to raise. The CAO shall present the information to the Mayor and/or council before the council meeting begins. The Mayor and council retain the right to limit the number of delegates presenting during each council meeting. At the time the delegate is accepted to present to council, the delegate will be notified of a maximum 10-minute timeline to raise their concern. After the presentation, the Mayor and council members may ask questions or make comments on the information presented. In consideration for the length of council meetings, the delegate may request to bring forth their issue in writing. Such written presentations must include the name and contact information of the delegate and a brief synopsis of the issue or concern. The delegate accepts a one-week response time to allow for the Mayor and/or council or chief administrative officer to respond in writing. The 13th Council respects our constituents' right to present their issues or concerns. In accordance with this policy, the Town of Happy Valley Goose Bay operates a respectful workplace, and all presenters and members of the public are reminded that any abusive or threatening behavior towards council employees or council will not be tolerated.
Okay, thank you Counselor Palmeroy. So we do have four delegations, I just want to remind delegations just further to what Counselor Palmeroy said. It is respectful, expected to be respectful. If there are any form of personal attacks on councilors, I will stop the meeting and you'll be asked to finish your, you will be finished your comments and you'll be asked to leave the council chambers. With that, we have four delegates. First up is Jill Elson. Okay, so welcome Michelle, floor is yours and you'll have 10 minutes. And I will, Greg will identify at the nine-minute mark and I'll identify to you, to the delegates, and we'll ask you to just summarize and finish your comments.
Hi, my name is Michelle and I'm Travis Ford. I can honestly say that I don't know, I don't know all the facts, but you made it very clear that you did not need to provide them. And you know what? That's okay. It's not a mine nor a community's business, Wanda Netter. Is potentially being fired. However, it is his business. Travis deserves answers. I'm amazed that someone can be fired so publicly in this day and age and not have provided a reason. It ever shocks me that in this time, mental health is so important, public shame is not just happening, but there being done by our town leaders. You may say that because of protocols and town bylaws that this is how...
Take your time.
You may say that this had to be done because this is how procedure is done. If so, then clearly you can see that these bylaws need to change. I know that Travis was offered an easier way out, basically resigned quietly, I guess. Was this supposed to be easier for him or easier for you? He was given 24 hours to make this life-changing decision. But Travis didn't take the easy way out. Travis stood up for himself because he knew that this wasn't right. I'm here tonight not only because Wanda Netter is potentially being fired without cause, but because as a member of this town, I don't want to watch it happen to anyone else. It's the process that I'm against. As councilors, this is not your main job. You may in it for one or two terms or whatever, but it's not your career. Before you make your final decision, I just want you to really think about what you're doing here. How much power you all have. Your one vote can change everything. Ask yourself, if you want to be responsible for taking away a person's career and livelihood, Travis left a good-paying job because he was offered this job, thinking that he was set for life in the career of a labor so hard to get. Before you vote today, ask yourself, when Travis started doing this job, were there guidelines set up? Were there any expectations of this job? If so, were they told to him? If he did not have the correct skillset to do the job, why wasn't he mentored or trained properly? And what exactly is required skillset if a bachelor's degree in recreation wasn't enough? Not to mention numerous internships at the arena and the many years of coaching that he has done. Why wasn't he let go during his probationary period? Isn't that what probationary timeframe is for? To see if Travis was the right fit for this job? If he was let go then, maybe he still could return to his previous job. Did you speak to his coworkers and staff members before recommending termination of his job? Did you ask if they found his work ethic and he building to do his job? Or did you just base it on the one hour a month that you met with him? Did you also consider how the work morale at the arena has changed for the better since Travis has been there? I would like to think that in any state for a healthy work environment, if people make mistakes, they have given a chance to fix them and they are educated on what went wrong so they can do better the next time. Was this done? Can you imagine walking into your old job and someone saying that not only were you going to be fired, but we're not going to tell you why? And to add more humiliation, we're going to do lies for the whole world to watch? Really think about it. Would you be okay with that? What if it was your child, your nephew? Travis has stated many times to you that even after all the stress that he's been through this month, he would like to fix this. He's willing to put all of this behind him and work with each of you to be successful in his job. He's not saying he's perfect, he's just asking for guidance. If Travis wasn't doing his job and you have done everything in your power to help or guide him, then I guess you couldn't make your decision. But before you vote tonight, before you take away man's livelihood and career, please make sure you honestly ask yourself, did you do everything you possibly could to help him? If not, vote to give Travis a second chance. Everyone deserves that much. Thank you.
Next up, we have Sherlene Doyle.
It should be red. Yeah.
Okay, it was blue. Probably better. Good evening, councilors. My name is Sherlene Doyle, and as you probably all know, I am Travis's mom. And this is a mother's plea. You can't touch me, I'm in the car.
Take your time.
Sorry.
No, no, take your time.
I've reached out to each and every one of you with hopes that you would change your mind and opinion of my son. I understand that you couldn't write back because you shouldn't engage, but I still hope that you have read the emails with some heart and empathy. None of you really even know Travis, so I'm going to tell you a little bit about him. He's got the ki, he's the kindest person you'll ever meet. He has the biggest heart. Whoever dreams that you're going to do this for yourself. He's so passionate and about his career, as you have seen in previous meetings. And he's even more passionate about the people of this town. Yes, he has ADHD, but that doesn't define him. He is always wanting and willing to learn new things. He is very open-minded to change. Watching Travis grow up as a teenager, I never would have dreamt that he would have continued his education further and to get a bachelor's degree in recreation. I just didn't think that he would have the interest because he never showed much interest in school. It wasn't until later in life that Travis was diagnosed with ADHD, which explained so much for me and opened my eyes to a lot. It also showed me that even though he had these learning struggles and being diagnosed with ADHD, he still persevered. He has come so far in his life and I can't be prouder of the man that he's grown to be. Can you imagine one of your children begging for their jobs back? What you guys saw during the last horrible experience of a month was a grown man desperately fighting for what he loves. Do you know how humiliating this has been for him? To see a grown man in tears over a job? Watching this was one of the hardest things that any mom should have to watch. Not only did we watch this, but the whole country has been able to watch this. Even though he has received so much support from the community and Canada-wide, it still doesn't answer why that this had to be done publicly. But yet through all of it, he still wants this job back. And he said, he has already said many times that this is a dream job. This is not only where he wants to be, this is where he needs to be. The people of this town has shown in many ways how much they want Travis to be reinstated in his position. He has no backup plan, unlike all of you. This was his only plan. He makes a difference. He cares passionately about his employees and every person that walks through the doors of that arena. Most importantly, the kids. We will never know the reason why you took his job from him in the first place, but you all had that power to do that. And you still have the power to change it. Please, make this right. Every single one of you have your careers outside of this building. Many, if not all of you, might not ever be on the Town Council again for whatever reason, but you will go on with your lives not affected by this. This decision is just a small blip in your lives, but it affects Travis's whole life. I have watched my son go from the top of the world to rock bottom in the last 30 days. And I've been worried sick about him. We all have. What you have seen of Travis in the past couple of meetings is what you, the council, have done to him with your decision and motion to get rid of him. This is not who he is. I am not saying that he's perfect because no one, none of us are. But right now, you still have the power to give my son back the career that he's worked so hard for. You said that you didn't feel that he has the skillset? I beg to differ. I doubt that you'll find anyone that would, that will not only have the skillset and bachelor's degree in recreation, but also have the passion, love, and willingness to learn for his career as Travis Ford does. I have watched my son be treated like a criminal and banned from the arena. This completely crushed him. And even though through all of that, he is still willing and hoping that he can work with all of you as a team and make this town a better place to live. Yes, you are all supposed to be leaders that we look up to. Aren't you supposed to support your own employees and encourage them to do better? And when they feel like they aren't living up to your expectations, shouldn't you, as their leader, step up and guide them in the right direction? Travis could have went anywhere else to work, but he chose to work here in his hometown. He left a good-paying job to work at this arena. He wants to make a difference here, as you already know, and he has. Many teenagers in this town has grown up with Travis as their coach, as their leader, and as their mentor. Show Travis and the people of the town that you have compassion and that you have talked, that you have decided that he is worth a second chance. None of us are perfect. Everyone deserves a second chance at some point in their lives. I'm sure that you have all made mistakes in your lives that you wish you could have fixed, even since you've been on this 13th Council. I'm sure that if anything like this would have happened to any of your kids, you would passionately be fighting for them too. I'm just asking you to give Travis another chance. Guide him on the right path. Show him that you don't give up on your employees or the people of this town. Show the town why they voted you in this position in the first place. Put your pride aside. Make this town proud of this council again, knowing that it's okay to make mistakes and change your mind and make things right. Give my son another chance. He's so worth it, and you definitely won't regret it. Thank you for your time.
Jill, are you, you're going next?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, no, no, it's fine. Jill Elson, welcome to council chambers. Floor is yours.
Good evening. I first want to thank the council for giving me space this evening to speak and to our community who have been supporting Travis during the past month for continuing to do what you believe is right and unjust. For those who do not know me, my name is Jill Elson. I was born and raised here in Happy Valley Goose Bay. I do not, I, pardon me, I do apologize upfront if I become a little shaky or nervous sounding. I've been taught from a very young age to always speak up, even if your voice shakes. I guess this is what brings me here this evening. I have known Travis Ford for 32 years. We started kindergarten together, then later graduating high school together. When I heard that Travis was our, was the new Recreation Director for our community, I thought to myself, finally, finally, someone who will be in this for the long term, for the betterment of our community, someone who was born and raised here, went away to further their education, to come home and work for their people. Someone who understands our unique demographics, who just gets it without having to learn or be taught it. Someone who knows that recreation and all aspects of that very challenging, demanding job field goes well beyond the arena and sporting events. Someone who so many hold so much respect for, approachable, understanding, go-getter, and most of all, someone a lot of our youth today can relate to. I don't know if you've been paying attention and listening to Travis as he speaks from his heart at these meetings regarding his position, or took a genuine interest to learn about Trav and his road to achieving such a remarkable education, but I did and I do. We may not have, be very close, Trav, but as a Valley kid, we always stick up for our friends and support them. Travis is someone who has overcame so much academically, personally, to achieve his degree. I'm so proud of Trav and how, and I hold him to the greatest regard. You see, one of my children struggles with schoolwork and mental illness. We all have mental health. Unfortunately, some of us are dealt crappy cards of a mental illness. My child gets very frustrated with themselves, completing schoolwork with their mental illness and their reduced intellectual ability for a specific form of learning is such a struggle day in and day out. However, when I mention Travis to them and how far he has come, and that they too are deserving of an education, a place of belonging in the workplace, it certainly helps and eases their mind to actually know someone that gets up every day, faces their battles with great dignity. It gives me a sense of comfort to know that regardless of the struggles, there is hope for a bright future, a rewarding career, a feeling of belonging, because I too look at Trav and feel his, and feel he is most certainly a successor. He beats the odds. Why should we not be proud of that and want someone like him representing our community? We proudly displayed the quote, "It takes a community to raise a child," on our town billboard. When I see this quote, Trav automatically comes to my mind. The many children and youth he has mentored over the years, the impactful impression he has left on their lives is something that we should all be proud of, that our town director provides that to our youth. I used to think our town was a very inclusive place to work. These past few weeks, I am not sure of that anymore. Terminating someone over a Facebook Live stream is tasteless and degrading. To not be accommodating to someone to make sure they are on the same level as everyone else, to not provide any resources, things to improve their job performance is neglect on your behalf. No disrespect to any of you, Mayor or councilors, who motioned and voted for this termination. However, do any of you hold an education from a post-secondary institution in recreation? You're not HR. You were not invited, voted in your seat as an HR person to make HR decisions, and I highly doubt any of you were not given objectives to improve your skillset on your job performance, then terminated on Facebook Live to only have to relive this nightmare again in a month's time. I will quote what Deputy Mayor Wallace said during the first public meeting regarding this. "Termination without cause does not mean without reason." I would like some clarification on this, as I feel this is gaslighting and manipulative. Over the past month, we have listened to Travis's HR matter within the council, and I should, and I thought surely this isn't an issue of racism, racism, or acts of terminating someone who is already in a marginalized population. It's just the same old same, someone trying to get their buddy in the position quietly type of thing. Then comes to the public's attention Tanya Michelin's layoff within the town. I was like, okay, no way, is this too much of a common pattern at this point? This time, a female, an indigenous local from some, from the Valley, someone who furthered their education and wanted to come home, work in their remaining working years at home, someone who is this, in this type of field, other people can relate to just by simply saying, "I am born, I was born and raised in Labrador," to just dis, pardon me, to disesculate a situation. Town council thought it was appropriate to terminate her position because of budget constraints. Although they had options put forth to keep Ms. Michelin on, the council didn't want to hear tell of it. Here is a stat for you. The global workplace participation rate for women is just under 47%, while 72% for men. The town council is certainly contributing to that stat of women in the workforce. Again, council, you are not HR. Counselor Rumbold, at a previous council meeting, you voted against the change of the lab inn to an insisted living care home. You said, and I quote, "Your reason for voting, no, is because you have to listen to those who voted you into your council seat." Well, I ask you this, Counselor Rumbold, why are you not listening to those of us who voted you in on the wrongful termination of our town Recreation Director Travis Ford? I checked the poll that is posted on social media this morning before, for the last update. One of those, on those who signed the petition, there are over 700 signatures. That's 700 people who you should be listening to, those who voted you into your seat, locals who have faith in you and your reasoning to become a town counselor. I do not know why you motioned for this termination, what grounds you have to terminate Travis, what education you have in this field, or why you felt this is needed to be done on Facebook Live. I guess it's based on the 25-year-old, 20, pardon me, sorry, 25-year-old policy you're all standing by. Again, you're not HR or a professional in this field. I too, like Travis, went away to school to better my education in this type of field Travis is working in, and I can tell you that the structure of our Recreation Department is outdated, lacking funding and resources, skeleton of a Recreation Crew who is the backbone of every event in this town, who I would say is holding on by a thread. For a town of our population to have one Recreation Director with no program assistance under them is unheard of. It's no wonder why that he cannot give 100% to each area if that's the case of terminated without cause, but there are reasons. But there are reasons? The reason is, he's stretched far too thin. Now you all, besides Counselor Constance Hobbs, want to terminate him and think someone else can do it better. If you paid any attention to how many Recreation Directors have come and gone since the long-term Record Director, Mr. Ken Anthony, there's been a few. Do you ever wonder why you cannot keep, keep people in this position? It's set up to fail, lacking resources, and now we have a Town Council who wants to terminate the Recreation Director. I guess we know where their priorities lay, and it's not within the Recreation and Community Services. All of this could have been avoided if you felt there was a situation that was severe enough to terminate Mr. Ford. Why didn't you hire an outside agency to do this work? Why did you feel that it was appropriate for the Town Council to act as HR? I am sure the town's lawyer was contacted on this situation multiple times, and my suggestion is, you better hope you're within the right of Town Council because this is far from over.
You're at your nine-minute mark, if you could work to it.
I only got a little bit more, can I finish? You all may only hold this position for a term, however, you're making a decision that affects Travis and his entire life from here on. That is some serious decisions to make that should not be taken as lightly as a Chair of the Committee making a motion, Deputy Mayor seconded it, and a quick 10-second vote and it's done. Travis means more than that to all of us here tonight, those watching, those who signed the petition, and those who support him. I will end with this quote by Margaret Chase Smith. "The right way is not always the popular and easy way. Standing for right when it is unpopular is a true test to moral character." Travis, my friend, regardless of this council's decision here tonight, please know, we believe in you and we support you. Your value doesn't decrease based on someone's inability to see your worth. And Mayor Andrews, I highly suggest that you take the Mental Health First Aid Training, and if you have already, then I think you should need, you need a refresher.
Okay, next speaker is Kathryn Mitsuk. Floor is yours.
I stand before you today on behalf of the Ford family to advocate for the reinstatement of Travis Ford as a Director of Community Services and Recreation. I am speaking words from his sister Chelsea Jennings, who is sending support from New Brunswick, and words of encouragement from his dad, Harry Ford, who has been supporting Travis since this, this whole event started. We all urge you to consider the implications of such a decision one last time.
Pass the tissues back to her, please. Just pass the tissues back to her.
In the past six weeks, there has been a significant public outcry regarding the potential termination of Travis. Citizens from all walks of life, including our youth, have voiced their support for Travis and his invaluable contribution-
Travis and his invaluable contributions to our community. This outpouring of support is a testament to the impact that Travis has had on the lives of countless individuals in Happy Valley Goose Bay and beyond. If the town council listens to none of this and takes none of it into account, I really hope that you remember these words, Travis, because you are not just the leader, you are a young leader who has inspired and motivated the youth of our town. Your innovative approach to community engagement, an unwavering dedication to creating opportunities for our young people have earned you the respect and admiration of many. The youth of our town stand by you, and because they see you as a mentor, a role model, and a champion for their aspirations. Under Travis's leadership, numerous initiatives have been implemented and praised by the residents of our town, including improved morale and resources for the staff under his supervision, building relations, relationships with the local school and administrations and user groups in the community, improvements at the dog park and the arena such as flooring and lighting, and creating new policies for a department that was sort of lacking due to the director position being vacant for two years during COVID. Travis's commitment to Happy Valley Goose Bay extends far beyond his current tenure. He has expressed his intention to continue serving our community for another thirty-plus years, making it clear that this is where he plans to spend the rest of his life. His dedication and long-term vision for our town should be seen as an asset, not a liability. Furthermore, it's perplexing that while focusing on Travis's alleged shortcomings, the council has overlooked its own mishaps. For instance, renting a building for nearly fifty thousand dollars a year and missing out on potential grants from the provincial government, resulting in the loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars for our town. Why aren't you holding yourselves accountable for these things that can be resolved much simpler than this process you are currently going through with us today? The sudden termination of Travis without any apparent cause has sent shockwaves through our community, and most importantly, Travis himself. The lack of prior communication or feedback regarding his performance raises serious concerns about transparency and fairness in the decision-making process of our town council. Moreover, as observers of this process, we are deeply troubled by the way in which a fellow human being has been treated. Drawing from some of our experiences managing employees, we have never encountered such a dismissal without cause. It's evident that there are underlying dynamics at play, perhaps a toxic presence within the recreation committee that Travis has dared to challenge. These narcissistic behaviors, as evidenced in some workplaces, can breed environments where manipulation and favoritism trump merit and skill. Travis's strength and independence may have posed a threat to such dynamics, leading to this unjust dismissal. With all that being said, rather than resorting to termination, we urge the council to invest in building in Travis's capacity further. Professional development and constructive dialogue can address any perceived shortcomings and ensure Travis is empowered to continue his invaluable service to our community. Despite all of this that has been going on, Travis continues to express his willingness and desire to work collaboratively with the current town council moving forward. He is committed to addressing any concerns or issues that may have risen and to finding constructive solutions that benefit our community as a whole. We urge you to seize this opportunity for dialogue and cooperation, rather than resorting to termination. Instead of focusing on differences, let us work towards finding common ground and solutions that will benefit all stakeholders involved. We urge you to vote no on the motion to terminate Travis and to continue supporting his efforts to make Happy Valley Goose Bay a better place for all, especially our youth. Now, these words that I've just said were words of support, encouragement, and admiration for Travis from his sister and dad, and they thank you for your time and consideration. From my perspective, I have a voice as well, and this has nothing connected to with what I just read out. These are my points of view. I was a previous recreation director in another community. I am a mother of an upcoming youth. I am a cousin to Travis, and I am a fifteen-year resident of Happy Valley Goose Bay. You were voted into this council by the residents of this community. There were reasons we chose you all specifically. You went door-to-door, vouching that you would do a list of things to make this place a better place to live, under your guidance. We voted you in for that. We gave you the time and listened in our doorways to what you each had to say. But, once we come in front of you to pour our utmost intimate feelings and emotions for you to consider, your reply is simply, "Thank you, next item on the agenda is..." Seriously, "Thank you, next item on the agenda is..." There is no dialogue, no conversation, and no recognition of what was just listened to. None whatsoever. I can guarantee you, the next time any of you come to our house, and I can give you the address after we're done, looking for a vote, expect to be confronted with the same After the first meeting, you, as a council, together, decided to remove all seating from the council chambers. Look at everyone standing here. There is enough room for the delegates, and I can guarantee you, we do not need to sit. Leaving elders and people who possibly had disabilities to stand. The last time you removed any seating from our community, that would have been a convenience for some, was when there was an issue with transients causing disturbances in public places. Is this the same treatment we get when we voice our concerns? That you remove seating to make a statement? I'm sure in the history of Happy Valley Goose Bay, you have not seen as much support in these chambers as what we all have here for Travis. There is a reason for that. You have a choice. You have a voice as a member of our town council. When you vote, you have the power to choose, to speak up, and to stand with those who support the community and its residents. I hope that you make the right choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. And unfortunately, I do have to say the next agenda item, because it, it is a single agenda meeting. All right, so we move to number four, which is a motion regarding human resources matter. And I'll put the floor over to Councilor Rumbold.
Thank you, mayor. On move that council dismiss the Director of Community Services and Recreation, Travis Ford, without cause, effective April tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Wallace. Councilor Brumfield.
I'm just gonna say one thing on this, because I've been in this situation myself personally. Some comments I heard is, what we're going through is what we have to go through under this policies act, not under our own policies. We didn't create this. This comes under provincial legislation, which is where we get our jurisdiction, so that's why we had to do this in this session.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Rumbold. Any further discussion? Okay, none being heard. All those in favor of the motion indicate with aye.
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion is passed.
You should be ashamed of yourself. Seriously.
The, there's a single agenda item, so what we'll do is entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn made by Councilor Conton Hobbs, seconded by Councilor Rumbold. All those in favor indicate with aye. Aye. Motion adjourned.
In motion to resign thirty council.
The council, the council...